Good morning.
Good morning.
Is city council meeting agenda for September 5th, 9:00 AM. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Stonecrest. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Jimmy Clinton.
Here.
Councilmember Rob Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Jasmine Cobble, absent. Councilmember George Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Diana Dahma.
Here.
Present. Mr. Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We stand for invocation and pleasure of allegiance, please. My good brother.
Father, we do bless and thank you for this opportunity for another day to not only serve you, but to serve the people of this great city. By serving them, we are serving you. So we thank you, Lord, for this time together, and we thank you for wisdom and knowledge and understanding and direction that we might impart and that we might direct the powers that be on this council to make quality decisions that will affect the quality of life for all citizens. So we thank you for this time together, Lord, and we thank you for your guidance and your presence, and we give you all the glory and all the praise. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You see it? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you did get the email from Councilmember McCobble?
I'm sure I did.
Okay, stating that she had a medical emergency, so just wanted to put that out.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, we go into the adoption of the city council agenda. As we sit with the agenda today, I am going to add a resolution of the... Okay. I'll take that back, that's going to be for work session. So perusing the agenda, I will take a motion for the adoption of the city council agenda.
Move the adoption, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Properly moved and second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. All opposed? Adoption of the city council's agenda. For a minutes, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting for... And we'll take them separately, August 1st, special call meeting. All right, seeing no changes. I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting for the August 1st.
Mr. Mayor, move that we accept the minutes for the meeting on August 1st?
Second.
Properly moved and second. Any further discussion? And seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Minutes approved. The meeting for August 15th, 2018? All right, now we'll take a motion to approve the minutes for August 15th meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Move for approval of the minutes for August 15th?
Properly moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, properly moved and second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Special call meeting August 15th, minutes passed. And the minutes for August 20th, 2018? All right, seeing none, then I'll take a motion to approve the minutes for August 20th?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes for August 14th?
August 20th?
20th.
Second.
All right, properly moved and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Minutes passed. All right, I see no presentations, so Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I have two public speakers. First one is Dave Marcus, and second is Fay Cofield.
All right.
Morning, council members, mayor.
Morning, sir.
Morning, everyone else. I just want to keep one issue alive. It's one question I have that I don't think anybody is able so far to answer. It's this: Why would a city council instruct a city to continue negotiations that never actually started regarding a proposal that never had been made without specifying the services that were expected, but presumably anticipating that slightly under $4 million of our money would be going to a company that may be qualified for the largest part of the work, but had provided no evidence of qualifications for other parts, and which had been selected by the city council without an RFP process, and do it without placing the item on an agenda? One question. I think a lot of people would like to know the answer. Thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My first thing is that we still do not have signs, at least I didn't see any yesterday, indicating where the city of Stonecrest begins and where you're departing the city, and this is after almost a year and a half of being a city. I also hope, now that we have reached this intercity thing with Georgetown-Gayana, that we will also look towards those who are in need that are very close to us, because, as you know, I do work in human rights, and I do work in civil rights, and I do work with people that are extremely financially challenged right here in the metro area. And within a couple of miles of us, we do have some extremely challenged families. As you know, we ran a summer camp, and we had an overwhelming response. I also want to address the issue of item number two on the agenda, which is the preliminary ethics complaint. I'm going to say this publicly, because I will be forwarding this on to the appropriate party. When I filed this ethics complaint, it was my hope that we, as adults, would be able to sit down and to come up with a resolution as to how to eliminate it and how to address some of the issues of these special called meetings, how they were called and what would introduce special called meetings. But here's the fact, very simple, very basic: The accused cannot investigate themselves. This matter is a state matter involving the state open meetings law, and that is where it is supposed to be decided, at the attorney general's level. That's where it was decided in DeKalb County. And I cannot understand how you are going to decide whether or not you're going to investigate it or throw it aside. I did get a letter from an attorney in Savannah, which will also be attached to my package, that said that the complaint was without merit. I also say he did not have the right to make that decision. He could say whatever he wanted to say, but the final decision does rest, as I understand it, with the attorney general. And since all of you but one person is accused of violation, I do not understand how you can sit in judgment of yourselves. And it is that simple, that basic. I'm a little bit crazy, but I'm not stupid. So I'm going to say that you guys can go ahead and do, handle it however you wish to handle it, but I am not going to be any way intimidated, because I know, some of you know the people that I have to deal with, and some of them have armies backing them up. I haven't been scared of them, and I'm not afraid of you. I am a proud magna cum laude graduate of the Bernie Mac School of Fear. Thank you very much. That's it.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item items. And number one, ordinance authorizing the sale of alcoholic beverages on premises consumption on Sundays from 11:00 AM to 12:30 PM at certain licensed establishment. Madam Attorney, how you doing?
Hello, good morning. This is a second read this morning of this ordinance. At the last city council meeting, Attorney Lenny Felgen presented this ordinance to the city council as a first read, and so it's on today's agenda as a second read item.
Okay. Madam Attorney, do we... I recognize that as a second read. Do we have to wait to another preceding council meeting, or we can vote?
We can vote this one, yes.
All right. What's the pleasure of the council? Any questions for Madam Attorney? All right. Seeing... Oh, I'm sorry, councilman?
I've got one. It's my understanding that this came about as a result of some establishment wanting to have brunch, and they couldn't serve alcohol on Sunday mornings at certain hours, so they went to the legislature to get this passed. Once it's passed, then it comes to each municipality to have a referendum to accept it, or reject it, or do whatever they want to do with it. So we're at a point now where we can voluntarily decide to implement it or not.
We are at a point now where this ordinance will place it on the referendum for November to put it before a constituent vote, and at the November referendum election, the constituents will either vote yes or no as to serving alcohol on Sundays, which is, right now, it starts at 12:30, but this would start it at 11:00 AM on Sundays.
Councilman Turner, I think to clarify, let me understand what you're asking. You could, in other words, if this council were to choose not to adopt this ordinance, then that's it.
That's it? I mean, we could not do it at another date?
Well, you could do it. You could bring it up the next time that there's going to be an election. You don't want to have, certainly don't want to have a special election for something like this.
Okay, and that's the second part of the question. I was reading something about a cost to do this. Since this is in conjunction with a general election, is there a cost to the county, to me, to the city, to make this happen?
Yes.
It's $15,000 cost. Non-negotiable.
Okay.
So after the first hearing last week, that was one of the questions that did come up, so I'm going to go back through, she researched, spoke with the folks from DeKalb County, and because of timing issues, the cost for us would be, because I think there's additional ballots that need to be...
We would have had to have it in by August 1st, and I think I spoke with Lenny and sent it to Tom back then, and because they use the state law as well as the law that's on the ballot, and the date that they advertised was back right after August 1st, so if we did not get it to them by then, it would have to be a special election that we would have to pay for. And that $15,000 takes care of the poll officials and the staff, the ballots, the mailing of the ballots, the facility usage, the transportation of the equipment, and the security, because it's like a separate election for the city of Stonecrest. It's not in... It's in conjunction, but it's separate. There'd be a separate ballot that people of Stonecrest would have to vote on. They have to vote here for the general, and then switch over and vote for Stonecrest.
Which goes back to the first question. If we decide not to do it now and do it later at a general countywide election, what would the cost be?
I don't... It won't be this, because it would be in conjunction with their election. So we probably won't have to pay for... You know, you pay for poll watchers, but not separate ones.
The time for doing that would be the election for the, in 2019, for the municipal election.
When you have the municipal election, you got to pay for anyway. So you put it on that ballot, and you won't pay any extra to have it on when you have your election in 2019.
So if no establishment is requesting this of the city, or putting pressure on the city to move this up so they can serve brunch with alcohol, so forth and so on, is there a benefit to us to do this now? This is a $15,000 question.
$15,000 question.
Good way of putting it. Okay.
My question... I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Ms. James, so what is the cost? Do you know what the cost would be if it just went on the regular general ballot?
We wouldn't have to pay extra money. We're paying for, to use the place.
Okay.
See, if it's on the ballot, you're using the place anyway.
Right.
Machines are already there and everything.
Okay.
We don't have an election this year, so we have to do our own. If we were just with them, then we wouldn't have to pay for all of it.
Thank you.
Unless, councilors have heard from other establishments, I haven't heard any pressing matter or pressing point to spend $15,000 this voting season for this particular ordinance. So I'll take a motion from the floor for council.
I just have a quick question.
Okay.
What did it cost us to put all of this together? That ordinance and all this information that you're submitting? I'm just wondering, how much have we spent to get it to this point?
I think that would be something that staff would have to, would have to tell you how, as far as attorney's fees or whatever that would be, you know, that would have to be, that number would have to be given by staff. If you proceed, if you decide not to go forward with this now, that, all that work's been done anyway, so you can, you would have to do it if you were going to take it up again anyway. Am I answering it the way that you're...
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just doing a cost analysis. I mean, if it costs $15,000 to get it here, and then it's $15,000 to get it on the ballot, but based on what you're saying...
It's not worth $15,000.
It's not worth the trade-off.
No, it's not worth $15,000 today to do it, but if it's not going to cost you anything more in 2019, then revisit it, because it's teed up to do it.
And before we table it, I actually would like to tap into, you know, the business community. Has anyone up here had any contact with the business community, or are we just assuming because no one has come forward? It's my understanding there are some positive incentives to this brunch bill, based on what I've read. And if the businesses haven't come forward, then it's our role as councilpeople to determine what's in the best interest of the business community. And I'm simply thinking, there's revenue attached to the brunch bill, and that's why the legislature's passed it, is my understanding. There are incentives, and there's revenue attached to it. Now, how we're going to be impacted, I don't know, but I'm not ready to table it, and I'm not ready to... I'd like to see a little bit more feedback from the business community and how it could impact us if it was, if we paid $15,000, and in the business community, if we're gaining $60,000. We don't know that. We just don't know if we're leaving money on the table.
There are some time constraints associated with having this item added to the November referendum, so if it were to be tabled, I don't know that we'd be able to make that timeframe for this November either way. I mean, depending on what the council's desire is, but if it is tabled even for a week or two, that may defer, that may not allow enough advertising time to be able to make sure it's on November ballot, and then we'd have to go on to be, as the attorney has noted, be reconsidered for next year.
Madam Clerk, actually, no, this is Madam City Attorney. This is not to approve it or disapprove it. This is to put it on the ballot so that people can vote on it. Am I correct or incorrect about that?
This is for it to be placed on the, for the notice and the publication, and for it to be placed on the November ballot.
The ordinance, the ordinance would become an ordinance subject to the approval of the voters. So that's really the, what would occur.
So the choices that we have today is to accept this and...
Or table it.
Or table it. What's the pleasure of the council?
After hearing everybody's opinion on this, I think prudent thing probably would be, in this case, to move forward with putting this on the agenda, I mean, on the ballot, move it in front of the citizens for a number of reasons. In District 1, I haven't heard from any of the businesses, none of the bars, none of the restaurants have came to me and asked directly or mentioned this in any form or fashion. However, you know, I do understand the argument that we ought to reach out to them on certain occasions. I haven't had the opportunity to run this by our city economic development group, but I would think that we would not lose at this point in time by moving forward with putting this on, moving this to referendum, particularly when we're only talking about, I know it may sound a little bit rushed, well, I'm going to go ahead and say it, you know, we're only talking about $15,000 in this case, you know, and we've had, but at least two council sessions and probably a work session to look at this, and we're at this point now. So, and then when you add the fact that we have this time constraint that we're working within, we, you know, I think the fool, the fail-safe at this point in time would be to move it to referendum.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just want to note that should the council decide to move forward, then we likely, the staff likely be coming back to the council for a budget amendment, as we did not have that particular cost budgeted in the election for this year. So we have some old things we need to go do the budget amendment for anyway, so that's something we need to just add to it.
And how long would that take?
We could do that. That's not a two-read, that's just we could bring it back at the next...
So then, so this would actually be pending the budget referendum? Yes or no?
Well, we would, it wouldn't, because that wouldn't take place until, if it's the council's desire to go ahead and have it done, then we would move forward with doing a budget amendment to show those, that monies into the, once we get it finalized, because again, the $15,000 was an estimate that the clerk obtained from DeKalb County. So hopefully, within that timeframe, we'd be able to get a more solidified cost and be able to move the money in prior to the election taking place. So prior to the cost being incurred, we have the money moved into the election line item.
If you were to, say, make the motion to do this, and part of that motion would be you have to appropriate the funds in order to do it, this is what he's really referring to, by the budget amendment, go ahead and include the appropriation, and then he'll come back with a budget amendment for your approval. In other words, it'll be appropriated. Appropriation is, you can do lots of things, but if you don't appropriate for it, it doesn't mean anything.
When you say it doesn't mean anything, you mean that we would not go forward?
You've appropriated monies for certain things for 2018. This is a new item, which would, I guess, fall out any sort of contingency or miscellaneous type thing. So part of your motion should be to appropriate the funds necessary to conduct the referendum, and this will force the budget amendment.
Right, so what I'm looking, what I was looking for was a way to move forward without tabling this, but then also having a out, you know, a way out if we, if members of council find out that there's no interest locally for this bill, we will have just an additional period of time to get that information and bring it back. And if we can, if we have a bike stop, like an appropriation, then we can use that bike stop to, as a way to resolve the issue, move it forward without tabling it, and also, you know, and then we can table it at a later time if the money is not there, if we find out that this is something that we don't want to move forward with, or if it just doesn't make fiscal sense.
Ms. James, when do you have to make the decision? As far as, when does the county need to know that you're going to put this on the referendum?
I need to contact them, but I know it has to be advertised. I have up to 60 days to advertise, but I don't know their restraints, because when, you know, when I gave it to you, or you thought I could do it, but they go by different rules, so I'd have to...
Well, they don't, their rules and what the legislation passed by the General Assembly were two different things.
Right.
That's...
They use the election rules, which said 90 days, as well as the bill that said 60 days, and that's why we missed it, because they wanted 90 days to advertise and do everything.
Mr. City Manager, you made the term, you said estimated cost. Was that in reference to the $15,000? So that's not an exact figure? It could be possibly more?
That's correct.
And how can we determine how much more that would be?
Well, what the county sent was for the office staff, an estimated cost for $10,950 for 14 precincts. And then to set it up between $250 and $300, I used the highest figure of 300. Number of ballots, I used 500. And those are ballots that people could ask for more, but those are for people, for absentee ballots, $2,000 for the fee, and they estimated $1,000 for the transportation of all the voting equipment to the poll sites. That's an estimate. And $35 an hour for police.
And that's 12 hours, right, from 7:00 to 7:00?
Well, I, that's, yeah, so that's just, the estimate is like $14,900, I estimate it $15,000.
All right.
But she has on here the estimated cost.
Okay.
Okay, and estimated means it could be more.
It could be more.
And I guess, I'm uncomfortable because I'm simply trying to figure out, we're going to spend $15,000, maybe plus, and we haven't even asked the businesses, what is their pleasure? We haven't even brought them to the table yet, so I'm just uncomfortable with not even knowing what's on the mind of the business owners. It could be a great thing, or maybe they really don't care, I don't know, but we don't know either. So without knowing it, I don't know why we would spend any money to put something on the ballot, and we don't even know how it's going to benefit us.
So Tom, can you help me with that? The motion, again, that would include the provision for us to look at the cost?
Well, then you, what you would do is make the motion to approve the ordinance subject to the passage of a budget amendment to provide for the cost.
Okay. So at this time, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make the motion to move this referendum, referendum subject to the passing of a budget referendum?
All right, properly moved. Do I have a second? I'll second it. All right, properly moved and second. Discussion? Or any further discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
All right. What do we have, Madam Clerk?
Motion, here.
All right, motion passes. Item number two. Morning.
Hi.
I'm here to talk, to give you my report and recommendation as relates to an ethics complaint that's before body this morning for preliminary review. As an initial matter, though, inasmuch as the complaint names the mayor...
Excuse me, sir, can you speak up a little bit?
Absolutely, absolutely. So inasmuch as the complaint names the mayor, it would be inappropriate for the mayor to preside over the council during that deliberation, or even to remain on the dais. So I'll ask that the mayor excuse himself, and the pro temp would now preside over the matter, Mr. Chair.
You.
Excuse me.
One quick question.
Who was listed as witnesses? Because if there are witnesses, they can't preside either, right?
No, not witnesses. We, at this phase, we're not entertaining witnesses. This is the preliminary review to decide whether or not the complaint even goes forward on the merits. So it's a bifurcated process. The council makes an initial or preliminary review to ensure that the complaint complies with the requirements of the ethics ordinance, and only after it passes that hurdle, that initial or preliminary review, does it go on for consideration on the merits, such that the parties would be able to present, or the person filing the complaint would be able to present his or her case, the individuals named would be able to defend themselves, and the council would consider witnesses and evidence. So that's only after it clears this initial preliminary review as set forth in the ethics ordinance.
I mean, I'm sorry, go ahead, finish.
So my question is, if a council member was listed as a witness, can they recuse themselves? And are you saying that if you are listed as a witness, you can still sit through the preliminary hearing, even though you are a witness?
A witness? I don't, I don't follow. A witness to what?
On Ms. Cofield's complaint, were there any witnesses listed? Because if there were witnesses listed, I'm of the opinion they may want to recuse themselves.
Well, if any individual feels that they want to recuse some herself, they're certainly free to do that. That is not my opinion of the matter.
Were anybody listed as a witness? Yes or no?
I'm not aware of anybody being listed as a witness.
Okay, thank you.
That was essentially my question, were there others that might need to be recused?
In my opinion, no, sir.
All right, good. Let the...
All right, good, let the proceedings continue.
Sir, so as I indicated, there are two distinct phases to the review of an ethics complaint. There's the initial review, where the council is gonna make a determination on the preliminaries, and to see whether it even meets other requirements to go forward. Once it clears that hurdle, then the council will consider it on the merits. Your ordinance reads that during the preliminary review, the mayor and council shall have the authority to dismiss complaints that are deemed to be unjustified, frivolous, or patently unfounded, substantially noncompliant with the requirements of the ethics ordinance, or fails to state facts sufficient to invoke the disciplinary jurisdiction of the city council. Once it survives that preliminary review, the mayor and council will hold an evidentiary hearing to rule on the merits of the complaint. What I have done, my, the council will obviously make the decision. My sole role is to give you my report and recommendation on this preliminary phase of the consideration. I believe you have received the copy of my report and recommendation, which sets forth the recommendation that the complaint be dismissed based on its procedural defects, and I will outline the reasons for that. There are two reasons that we believe, or I believe, that the complaint should be dismissed. One, because it fails, it does not comply with the procedural requirements of the ethics ordinance. And it does that in three respects, and secondarily, it fails to state facts that would invoke the disciplinary jurisdiction of the, of the council. As an initial matter, one of the individuals who was named is not subject to the act. This individual serves on the Arabya Mountain Steering Committee, and that is not a board that is within the ambit of the ethics ordinance. The ethics ordinance is clear that it does not apply to every single individual who may serve on a city board or commission. It applies to certain individuals, or to certain boards, such as the board, the zoning board planning commission, if we had a development authority, it applies there, but other boards that are not specifically named are certainly not included. And so, the Arabya Mountain Steering Committee is not one of those boards that is within the scope or the ambit of the ethics ordinance, and for that matter, on its face, it does not apply to the individual named, and it should be dismissed against that individual. Secondarily, the complaint fails to comply with the procedural requisites of the ordinance in the following respects. The ordinance requires that there be a brief statement identifying the name and title of the city official or employee against whom the complaint is filed. So, it can, the complaint will only be filed against one individual. Second, it has to be numbered paragraphs that list the specific provision of the ethics ordinance that the individuals claim to have violated. And third, the statement has to be sworn and notarized, so people have to swear to the allegations that are being made against the individuals named. Well, in this case, the ethics, excuse me, the complaint purports to name three individuals, and that certainly can't be the case, it can only name one. Secondarily, the paragraph, they're not numbered paragraphs, and it does, and the statement does not list the specific provisions of the ethics ordinance that is alleged to be violated. Finally, the statement is unsworn, and so as an unsworn, unnotarized statement, it does not meet the procedural requisites of the ordinance. Some, there would be the temptation suggested these are mere technical requirements. However, these are the requirements that you, as a body, put in your ethics ordinance, and these procedural requirements are of equal dignity to the substantive requirements, so they can't be easily cast off, especially when an individual would claim that a city official violated the law, where then they're held to that standard of themselves complying with the law, which is clearly set forth in the ethics ordinance, and that did not happen in this case. There are other reasons that are set forth in my report and recommendation, and I'll stand on those, but at this point, if the council has any questions, I'm happy to entertain those.
Okay.
Right. No, I'm deciding, so you may speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Temp. Attorney Denmark, if I'm hearing you right, and I'm trying to work through this, we as the body, the governing body, we are determined if we broke the law? Because if we're, if we're determining in a preliminary hearing whether we broke the law, I want to know if I can recuse myself from this particular part of the meeting.
Like I said previously, any council member can recuse him or herself at any time for any reason. You certainly don't need my permission to recuse yourself, but if you're asking me whether there are grounds that exist for you to recuse yourself, in my opinion, the answer is a resounding no. This council created an ethics ordinance. You created the rules for this ethics ordinance, and what I'm doing is telling you the rules that you created. Now, if the council wants different rules, the council is free to create different rules, but these are the rules that you created, where you made yourselves the judge of ethics complaints.
Well, yeah, maybe we did that, but I'm still not, I'm not comfortable with determining if I broke the law.
You're not named on the ethics. The, it had you, the complaint named Mayor Jason Larry, and I advised that it was inappropriate for the mayor to participate in the discussions, or even to sit on the dais while the matter is being discussed, because he was named. You are not named, so you don't have to recuse yourself, it doesn't apply to you. And so you're free to make a decision if you so choose, but you're also free to recuse yourself if you so choose.
Go ahead.
Decision?
Go ahead.
Counsel, you've heard the case explained by our attorney, and you have the recommendation. I've gone through this, and I'm looking at the recommendation before us, and it says the complaint is recommended to be dismissed at the preliminary review meeting, the complaint for this, for two reasons. One, the complaint fails to substantially comply with the filing requirements of the Ethics Code, and two, it fails to state facts sufficient to invoke disciplinary jurisdiction of the city council. What is your pleasure? I have a question, if you know what I mean, in reference to what you were saying about it's not being sworn information. So, these are allegations or complaints by somebody just making without any type of sworn, or I guess, legal ordinances behind it or anything?
Well, the sworn part is that the statement has to be notarized, and when you notarize, that's giving a sworn statement.
Right.
And the reason being is because we want people to be under oath and to swear to what they're saying, because then they're subject to perjury for making a false sworn statement. And so if the statement is not sworn, it's just like when you go to court, and you raise your right hand, and you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and that's what the truth will help you guide. Now, you've got some skin in the game, because you're swearing under oath that what you're saying is true. And so, your ordinance requires a sworn statement. The statement in this case was not.
Okay, thank you.
But the larger issue is, is really that there's no merits based on our charter currently and our code of ethics, is your recommendation at this point in time?
Well, it fails to comply with the procedural requirements. The merits discussion would be the second phase of it, and I guess maybe I'm, I'm being hyper technical, using the term merits, but it's, it fails to satisfy the procedural requirements, and I'm drawing the distinction between procedurally and then on the merits.
Well, I guess my point, to get to my point directly would be that you're not saying this is an opinion. This is not your opinion. This is based on what is now in our code of ethics.
Absolutely, absolutely, without a doubt.
All right. Okay. Counsel, you have a recommendation before you. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor Pro Temp, I move that we follow the recommendation of the attorney based on our code of ethics, which is that it doesn't meet the criteria.
Let me share this.
If we're doing, if we're doing both, if we're doing both cases, or we're doing, so, okay, so I'll read it directly from here. Our recommendation is for the complaint to be dismissed at a, to be dismissed. The complaint fails to substantially comply with the filing requirements of the Ethics Code, and fails to state facts sufficient to invoke the disciplinary jurisdiction of the city council, just based on our Ethics Code.
I have a motion on the floor. I'll second it.
A second.
Go ahead. And second it. And properly moved and seconded, you ready for the question? Discussion?
Mr. Attorney, I'd like to properly recuse myself.
You would direct that to the chair.
Mr. Mayor Pro Temp, I'd like to recuse myself.
State reason.
Reason being, I am not sure that, although I respect the opinion of Mr. Denmark, I'm not sure still if this council is empowered to determine if we violated the law, and as a result of that, I'd like to recuse myself, please.
So then? This, you just said that the council violated the law? I'm trying to understand something. You want to restate that?
Yes. I'd like to recuse myself, because I'm not sure if the council is empowered to hear this ethics case, which is against a member of this board. And so for that reason, I'd like to recuse myself.
Mr. Chair, as I said.
You're clear?
Before.
I'm sorry, were you clear?
I'm, yeah.
And in addition to that, Ms. Coefield is also one of my constituents, and so for that second reason, I'd like to recuse myself.
Okay.
What I would say is, as a general matter, most communities around the state of Georgia have ethics ordinances, and the city council presides over these matters. GMA has a model ethics ordinance, and the ethics ordinance is a very routine thing that city councils do around the state of Georgia, and I would imagine around the country, and the city council is empowered to hear them. If an ethics complaint is brought against a particular member of the council, then that member of council is, would not be allowed to participate in the deliberations or have any consideration of the matter. So, I just want to assure the council that when you enacted your ethics ordinance, which you yourselves set up and made yourselves the individuals who determine and rule on these things, you did not do anything that was not consistent with the law and what many communities around the great state of Georgia have been doing since time out of mind.
Thank you. No, 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 no. No, no, you are out of order, out of order. Ms. Coefield, you're out of order.
She needs to be removed or something.
She's out of order.
Because this is not my complaint, because my complaint was filed against everybody who's on the court. So, everybody should recuse themselves. And I have time to hear the other side.
Thank you. Now.
Y'all have a complaint to do?
Sir, please, 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 please. We have a written examination of the complaint, and we have a written recommendation. Either we agree with it, or we do not agree with it. There's a motion on the floor in reference to this analysis of the complaint and the recommendation. So, are you prepared to vote? Call the question, yes. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
I recused myself.
Right. We're fully aware.
Okay. Long as you know, Madam Clark, for the record.
Fully aware, that was already on record.
For the record, I didn't vote.
I haven't.
Okay.
Sir.
We are at that point where you have a city manager comment.
Oh. I'm up. Just one quick thing I did want to, I want to make correction about, there was a comment made earlier during public comments regards to the city limit signs. Those have been installed now. Our communications director, Agent Bell, Pless Joyner, they've been working with the DeKalb County, and at least 12, 13, I believe, have already been posted up around and throughout the city. So, I just want to make sure that the council and the public was aware that we have gotten in the process of installing the city limit signs on those entry points when you're coming into the city. That's all I had.
Ms. City Attorney? Madam City Attorney?
Yes, I'm going to give the floor to Ms. Cosgrave. She's gonna give a report regarding the status of the IGAs.
As you recall, we had previously brought before this council four draft IGAs, which we were working with the county to move forward and to receive final drafts, and I have an update for you today that I'd like to provide. Our directions from, that were given by this chief operating officer of the county, is that they would like to put the four IGAs at the same time on the county's agenda. We have confirmed in working with the county attorney's office that the 911, the fire services, and the elections IGA are in final form. The county attorney and the county staff have accepted our revisions that we circulated to them, and at this point, we are just awaiting the final execution copies to bring before the council. As to the police services IGA, when the city manager and I were discussing this IGA with you, there were some various terms and provisions that we wanted to go back to the county and work with them to, to add into the agreement and to discuss further. At this time, we have sent a revised draft over to the county and the county attorney's office, and they are reviewing it, and we are awaiting any further comments or questions that county staff has, and we anticipate receiving those very soon, and then moving forward with adopting all four IGAs, the police elections, fire, and 911 at the same time. Additionally, there is another IGA that the city manager and we have been working with the county on. It's the solid waste management IGA. Last week, we received two further revised drafts from the county with various tweaks. We have reviewed those, sent our comments and questions back on to the county. So again, that's the fifth IGA that we anticipate bringing before you in final form shortly, as soon as we receive the revised version back from the county.
I just want to make one other quick comment regards to the IGAs. One of the ones, we're working on roads and drainage, public sanitation, all the other ones, Parks and Rec is being, being one of them. One thing they've asked for is a list of all the parks that we intend on having them for consideration. So, it was staff's intent to send them a list of all the current parks located within Stonecrest, didn't know if there was any other concerns or comments in regards to the council from that, but that was gonna be our intent, to send them a list of all the current parks located within the city of Stonecrest at this point.
As far as, and if I could, so as council understands this, is that there's no time limit in Georgia law as far as when you can agree to take, you know, take ownership of the parks. So, to a certain extent, they're asking you to go ahead and make that decision now? Am I, am I not correct?
As we start the process of drafting and crafting the IGA, they simply want to know again what the parameters are, so there's, they've asked us for what are the lists of the parks that be in consideration, so next we said all parks, all parks currently located within the boundaries of the city of Stonecrest.
So, so you're able to, you have an IGA for them to basically maintain their parks within your city limits. You have, at such time that you wish to do so, acquire those parks, or acquire any one of the parks for $100 an acre, which includes all improvements and everything else.
So, to the city attorney's point, he's absolutely right, so we're not saying that we're immediately taking them, we're saying all those that would be included within that, within the scope of that arrangement, would be all those parks currently located within the boundaries. That's how we're making that, make sure we're clear for the council, everyone's clear on what that list would look like. It'd be all parks currently within our boundaries.
Excellent. Okay, okay.
That's it.
All right. All right. Councilor Turner?
Yes, sir. Just like to announce our monthly cultural exchange breakfast will be this Saturday, the 8th, from 9 till 11, at the House of Hope on 4650 Flatjoe's Parkway. Again, our theme is turning Georgia blue. We'll have people from the voter registration office there to talk to us about what we need to do to make this thing happen. So I look forward to you being there. Thank you.
Excellent. Councilman Plann?
Thanks, sir. Just announced that our regular Saturday leadership, community leadership meeting will start at 10 o'clock this coming Saturday. We have these every second Saturday of the month. This is a candid conversation about issues of concerns to the city of Stonecrest. We have stakeholders involved, as well as city employees, as well as mayor and council members. So we invite you all out every second Saturday. Thanks.
You, sir. Councilor Turner?
Just one observation. On the way in this morning, I received a weather report, and it said Stonecrest, Georgia.
Right.
And that was significant.
All right.
And also Googled Stonecrest, and it came to the correct address, although it does show shared with La Tonya.
It will.
We're working on it.
All right. Councilwoman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Here's what I'm working on. Next week, we have Visage Productions, who is coming in. They have a business license to do business in Georgia. We're doing a site visit for locations in Stonecrest. We have partnered with Keep DeKalb Beautiful, and we've also partnered with the Georgia Film, the DeKalb County Film Commission, and we have a full schedule with them next week. We'll be touring all of the city of Stonecrest and parts of DeKalb County. We've contacted the union, the lawyers, we have contracts, and these are private ventures right now. We're hoping they'll go public-private, but it's going to create jobs, and it's going to actually help with our tourism, and it's going to help with our youth in the community. We're looking to start a youth team court, and we've got a couple of judges who are on board with lending their courtroom for the filming of this particular production. We also have two additional productions that they will also be looking for film locations for, and we're looking to eventually roll out the next step to you.
I don't have anything. I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so adjourned. We will move into our work session. Does anyone need a five-minute break, or?
I do.
Okay. Take five minutes, folks, and we'll go straight into our work...